Good evening. I would like to call the May 24, 2016, meeting of the Huntsville Planning Commission to order. I am Gary Whitley, Vice Chair of the Planning Commission. I will serve as Chair this evening. As we start, I would like to start with introductions of the members, starting from my right, your left.
TJ Mears.
Carlos Matthews.
Jenny Robinson, City Council.
LaFrida Jordan.
Donna Hendricks.
Sally Warden.
Peggy Richard.
Les Tillery.
Kelly Scrimsher.
Michelle Jordan's staff, and one more member is approaching.
Jeffrey Rice, Huntsville Police Department.
And we also have Claudia Anderson from the City Legal Department here in our rear to keep us straight. With that said, I'd like to call for the adoption of the minutes of the April 26, 2016 meeting.
Moved to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. This evening, we have public hearings. Those of you from the public who may wish to address any of the items listed under public hearings, if you will take the time, once the item has been called, to go to either of the microphones located here in the room, and if you will then give us your name and address for the record. We will start with item number one, Irondale Subdivision Phase Three. Is there anyone here to speak to item number one, Irondale Subdivision Phase Three? See?
Before introduction of the speakers, I can give you a presentation of the Irondale Phase Three. This item is located northwest city, north of US Highway 72 West and east of Nance Road. This is a part of the Irondale subdivision development. This is the last phase of that development consisting of 27 lots. This item is on R-2A, has approximately 8.94 acres. The previous re-preliminary and final plating of Phase Two was in July of 2015 for 35 lots, and the remaining Phase Three is before you for a re-preliminary.
Thank you. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Item two, McMullen Cove, Abbey Glen, Phase Two at McMullen Cove.
McMullen Cove Abbey Glen, Phase Two at McMullen Cove is Zone R-1A, has approximately 6.22 acres. It is a part of the overall McMullen Cove private development. It's located southeast city, north of Little Cove Road and west of McMullen Lane. The layout for McMullen Cove was approved in September of 2005, and this consistently moves forward with that development.
Is there anyone here to speak to item number two? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Item three, Nature's Cove, Phase Five, a re-subdivision of Nature's Cove East.
Nature's Cove, Phase Five, a re-subdivision of Nature's Cove East is Zone R-1B, has approximately 55.67 acres. This item was approved for a layout in April of 2016. It is located southeast city, south of Caldwell Lane and east of Nature's Trail. In addition, this property is a part of our original plat restriction for the R-1A abutting zones.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Yes, my name is Brigadier General Roger Boltman, B-U-L-T-M-A-N, at 2918 Tantalon Drive in Hampton Cove. I'd like to make some comments reference to Nature's Cove, Phase Five. First of all, I'd like to thank the Planning and Zoning Commission for requiring the developer to have 100-foot wide lots on all the properties abutting next to Hampton Cove. I think that was a great step, and I wanted to personally thank you for doing that because that will help maintain the aesthetics and the value and the quality of Hampton Cove. Not saying that what the developer's building is any different, but there is a presence from that, having those lots at 100-foot wide, and I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Second of all, I'm still concerned about the grading, especially the grading as when you get into the details of this area that abut behind lots 190 through 200, which is the properties from the developer that back up against the Tantalon Drive properties in Hampton Cove. I'm concerned about the grading. You know, we had an issue over in Grand Highlands where the developer totally ignored, or it appears the developer totally ignored the grading concerns, and there are three properties on Tantalon Drive that now get flooded backyards because the Grand Highlands failed to follow their steps. But I'm concerned about the grading because the land behind properties 190 through 200 tapers down into the developer's land, and it appears, according to the drawings that I looked at with the planning and zoning members, is that it appears that there will be some type of a ditch or a swale or a queak cut behind there to handle the water to flow, and if the developer adheres to that, what's on, what shows on the drawings, I think it'll be sufficient, and it should handle the water, and it should deal with it, that we have the concerns that we don't end up with the same problems we did right next to us there in the Grand Highlands. And so, I just wanted to make sure it's on the record that the drainage that runs in the, behind the properties 190 through 200 for the developer, that there is a lot of water that comes from Hampton Cove into that area, and I wanted to make sure that that's on the record, that there are some concerns about that. And the last issue I have is I understand the developer has a right to clearcut the property up to the property line. And, you know, as I was told, I think, when I talked to not only the planning and zoning, but to the thing, to the council, the council, the city council, is that Huntsville really doesn't have someone who runs around and worries about trees. Trees are an issue between the developer and the property owners. There's a great line of trees, mature trees, that run behind and along the back of properties 190 through 200, and I would hope that the developer has some ability to maintain some of those. I realize the setback is 30 feet back there, but I don't know how far they'll clearcut, and all I want to do is go on record is that there's a great line of mature trees behind this development section between lots 190 and 200, and I would hope the developer has an ability or responsibility to maintain some of those trees. And other than that, I thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else here to speak to item number three? Thomas, do you have any additional information regarding the grading or the trees?
No, that would be required by the engineer. I do not have any.
Is the engineer?
Record is here, yes.
Jeff Mullins, 2101 West Clinton, the engineer for the project. We'll do the same as we did on Phases One, Two, and Three. We kept a lot of, as many trees as we could. We kept the trees on the west property line that was the buffer between us and Featherstone. So, it's our intent to try to keep as many trees between our development and the Hampton Cove development as possible, as long as we can maintain positive drainage. Trees sell lots as well as anything, so that's the intent. And as far as the drainage ditch, I mean, we've got to put that in per the plan, so I don't see that being an issue.
Thank you. If there's no one else to speak to item number three, item three is closed. Item four, the Retreat at Goose Creek.
The Retreat at Goose Creek is located southeast city, east of Old Highway 431 and south of Berkeley Road. This item is Zone R-2B and is approximately 18.3 acres. A preliminary, I mean, a layout approval was approved last month in April of 2016 for 101. This item is before you for preliminary of the 53 lots.
Is there anyone here to speak to item number four, Retreat at Goose Creek? Yes, ma'am, if you'll give us your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Bogart Osborne, and I reside at 2003 Meadow Creek Circle in the Meadows over in Owens Crossroads, which is the development that is in behind off the Meadows Boulevard that this subdivision that is going in, you will have to drive by. Several of my neighbors are here this evening, and we have had the opportunity to speak with Mr. Wright, the developer, and are still very concerned about the lack of ingress and egress going into Old 431 and the amount of traffic that it's going to be generated onto the Meadows Boulevard. I've spoken with Mr. Nunez and someone from the engineering department, and understand that it is within current city regulations on the volume of the traffic, but we are still very concerned about that and the tree line that is going in prior to the retaining wall and the entrance. We would very much, again, as the general just mentioned, in the development over in Nature's Cove, would very much like to see as much of the trees being left in that area as possible.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak to item number four?
Yes, good evening. I'm Scott McConnell, 8027 Goose Ridge Drive, also of the Meadows. And a few comments here. Number one, we have not had the chance until today, more or less by accident, to have our voices heard and opinions heard on this, although it may have been announced by law. I'm more or less used to, from other states, a posting on the site where there's development proposed. There was nothing. We weren't notified by mail, which is disappointing at the least. My first concern is the density of homes for the entire proposal. I understand that this is just 53 being proposed, but that's a very small amount of land for 100 homes to be right at the entrance of our neighborhood. So, we've actually seen conceptual drawings, and I believe the final plan is to include 101 in that small corner that's at Old 431 and the Meadows Boulevard. There's several of us that have bought homes in that neighborhood, particularly enjoying the drive in the entrance way and not understanding that that was part of the end plan. So, and also, the traffic volume has been addressed. I think there's other things that could be done to mitigate that. One would be a dedicated entrance off of Old 431, not the Meadows Boulevard. Potentially a light at 431 in the Meadows Boulevard in a traffic circle at Old 431. If you add this up down the road and look at the volume on 431 where everybody's going to be going, realize that there's going to be significant wait times, especially at rush hour. Next concern is the destruction of environment and the serenity of the neighborhood entrance. You can see from the picture there that there's a significant amount of mature vegetation. We're talking 80 to 100-foot tall pine trees directly against the road. There's no way to envision these houses going in there without the complete removal of all that vegetation. And I personally think that's a travesty. It's a visual pollution and potential environmental impact.
Is that all, sir?
I'm checking my notes here. Yes, that is all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just so that you're clear, the only thing that's before the commission tonight, there are 53 lots proposed. Mr. Nunez, regarding the traffic has been complete, completed, and?
Through the assessment of the design, the site, minimum site distance is met. The volume is not an issue to the current capacity of the road. I am no traffic engineer, but I'm, hopefully, there is a traffic engineer here to speak on behalf of those matters, but from the meeting of all of the regulations, traffic, they have met those.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak to item four?
Yes, sir. My name's Oscar Witt. I live at 8001 Goose Ridge Drive. I'm also in the Meadows subdivision. I have a concern about the placement of the proposed entrance. As a father of a young kid that's going to be driving, it appears to me that the entrance is going to be positioned in a curvy area. I know that according to the speed limits, we have plenty of visibility, but people do get a little bit heavy on the foot, if you know what I mean. So, I just have a concern of the placement. I don't know if that was taken into consideration. And I just want to make a note of that.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Mullins, would you like to speak to that?
Jeff Mullins, again, the, also the engineer for this project. This was part of the Meadows Long Range Master Plan that, you know, Meadows actually was preliminary platted several years ago, '05, '06. This area up front is zoned R-2A, which would allow for apartments, two-story apartment buildings, multifamily. The developers decided to go back and do a mix of single-family and single-family attached. We have a large green space in the middle. We put a landscape buffer along Meadows Boulevard, trying to do everything we can to make this very appealing. You've got to remember, it's in his best interest to make this a great entrance because he has a couple of hundred more acres of land to develop further to the, to the east. I can answer any questions outside if we need to, any other concerns.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak to item four?
I would thank you. Good afternoon. My name is David Adcott, 2029 Meadow Creek Circle there in Hampton Cove. I guess I'd like to voice the same.
Can you give us your address again, please?
Yes, 2029 Meadow Creek Circle in Hampton Cove. And I would like to voice the same concern as others. It would appear that the simplest entrance would be from Old 431. To add the entrance there on the main Boulevard just adds additional risk from a fire and safety. I know, I understand, we've talked about adding some emergency egress, but still, you've got a gate to concern yourself with, et cetera. And just looking at the plat map, it would seem fairly simple that easiest entrance would be from Old 431. And I was one of the original landowners in the new development, and I've looked at all the plots and reviewed all that information before I purchased my lot house. And in none of the planning that I've ever looked at was that area ever shown to be in development. So, I'd be concerned or be interested in where that was actually recorded because I haven't seen that anywhere, but I do appreciate your time and would certainly like to, you know, reiterate the safety issue I see with, with having that entrance in that area. And certainly, I realize the speed is 25 miles per hour, but as the other gentleman alluded to, I don't see the value added in putting the entrance there versus on Old 431. It would just make much more sense. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak to item four? The public hearing is closed. Item five, Stonegate, I'm sorry? Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see you there at the mic.
I'm sorry. My name is Jim Wright, 64, McMullen Lane, Huntsville, Alabama. I am the owner of the property, and I have heard several comments about, they were, the property owners are the, are not aware that this property had a master plan concept. I may be, I'm not accurate as to the number of lots that were originally proposed back in 2007 and '08, but it was submitted to the city somewhere around 500-plus lots in this community. And that part that we're talking about today was part of that grand plan. I bought the property from another landowner who was going to actually develop apartments. I bought it from him to develop a single housing attached product. So, just want to make that clear.
Thank you. Thank you. Item four is closed. Item five, Stonegate Subdivision Phase Three.
Stonegate Subdivision Phase Three is located northwest city, north of Harbin Road and east of Waltrana Highway. This item was before you for preliminary in July of 2013. This item is again before you for a re-preliminary of 46 lot. This item also has zoning plat restrictions for R-1A plat restrictions of 75-foot, 75-foot feet frontage and 25, 20, 12,000 square feet lots. This item is on R-1B and is approximately 26.58 acres.
Is there anyone here to speak to item five? Seeing none, item five is closed. Item six is zoning. The Webster rezoning is item six A. Is there anyone here? After Ashley gives us a presentation?
This zoning, rezoning request is approximately 3.92 acres. It's currently zoned heavy industry, which is the original zoning of this property. The proposed rezoning request is to rezone this property from residence, excuse me, from heavy industry to residence to district, which would accommodate single-family detached as well as single-family attached and two-family dwelling neighborhoods. This is for a proposed single-family attached neighborhood, and this property is located east of First Avenue and on the north side of Freeman Road. This was previously a tree nursery, and I have some photos of the existing property as is. It used to be Webster's Tree Nursery, and they have since moved, and the property has been for sale and has recently been purchased.
Thank you, Ashley. Sir, are you here to speak to Webster rezoning?
Yes, sir. Good evening. My name is Cole Kupac. I live at 2709 Hampton Cove Way here in Owens Crossroads, Alabama, 35763. Wanted to express my support for the rezoning. I have properties at 2527, 2525, 2517, and 2512 Roland Road adjacent to this property. We support it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak to item six A?
Gary Moore, 2513 Freeman Road. Just purely nosy, would like to know what is going to be, what is planned to be put in there, that acreage?
This is for a proposed single-family attached dwelling neighborhood, which is townhomes.
Is it like the homes at the end of the Freeman? Is it going to be like those apartments, or?
Um, no, it's a townhome development.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Anyone else here to speak to item six A? Seeing none, the item is closed. Item six B, Lopez zoning.
This property is newly annexed land as of April 2016. It is approximately .48 acres. It is a part of the Hermitage Place subdivision. In the initial phases of this subdivision being developed, several homes were built in the county, and the remaining portion of the property was annexed into the city limits. This particular property owner petitioned to annex so that they could have access to city services. The proposed zoning designation for this property is Residence 1A, which is consistent with the remaining homes in the city limits within the Hermitage Place development.
Is there anyone here to speak to item six B, Lopez zoning? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. That brings us to item two subdivisions. And we'll take the subdivision committee report. Kyle is not here, so Kelly, would you do us the honors?
The subdivision committee met on May 18 at 7:30 a.m. and has the following recommendations. The Cove Second Edition re-subdivision of lots 9F and 9E, of a re-subdivision of lot 9D, of a re-subdivision of lot 9B, of a re-subdivision of lot 9 of the Cove, and re-subdivision of lot 10 of the Cove. It is presented for final approval on eight lots.
Michelle, is it in order for final?
Yes, it's in order with improvements to be installed by May 3, 2017.
Move for final approval.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, was there any discussion? I left that out. Okay. All those opposed? The item passes.
Irondale, is that correct pronunciation? Subdivision Phase Three, re-subdivision of tract one and common area of, common area A of Irondale subdivision. The committee recommends re-preliminary approval on 27 lots.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes.
McMullen Cove Abbey Glen, Phase Two at McMullen Cove. The committee recommends preliminary approval on 15 lots. Move to approve.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item pass, item passes.
Modern at Providence. These are apartments. The committee recommends layout and preliminary approval on 300 units. This is also presented for boundary plat approval on 300 units.
Okay. I will entertain the first motion for the layout and preliminary.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The layout and preliminary passes. Now, I'll entertain the motion for the boundary plat approval.
Move to approve the boundary plat.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Boundary plat approval passes.
Nature's Cove, Phase Five, re-subdivision of Nature's Cove East. The committee recommends preliminary approval on 138 lots with a waiver on double-fronted lots 155 and 156.
Move to approve.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes.
Oak Grove at Farley Farm, Phase Five, presented for final approval on 24 lots.
Michelle, is it in order for final approval?
Yes, it's in order with improvements to be installed by May 13, 2017, and sidewalks to be installed by May 13, 2018.
Move for final approval with the recommendations that have been made.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes.
Overton Subdivision, presented for final approval on 30 lots.
Is it in order for final approval?
Yes, it's in order with improvement, sidewalks, and landscaping to be installed by May 11, 2017.
All those in favor?
Move for final approval.
I'm sorry. Motion.
Move for final approval with recommendations made.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes.
Retreat at Goose Creek. The committee recommends preliminary approval on 53 lots.
Move to approve. Second.
Any discussion?
Do you have questions? Based on the comments that we heard earlier? There were questions about the master plan being recorded somewhere, but people didn't see where it was recorded. Where would generally someone find that, and?
Essentially, we have a overall layout approval for the Meadows Master Plan. It, I think the original plan did not include this section from what we had for the first approval in 2005, 2006. Since the acquisition by Mr. Wright, he since has changed that master plan. This layout was before you last month for approval, and, but it's a part of his master plan now.
So, that would explain why residents who had looked at the previous master plan didn't see this.
Potentially, yes.
Okay. There was discussion about relocating the entrance, and I would be interested to know from Mr. Mullins if, has anybody looked at the possibility of relocating the entrance? Is that even a possibility?
We looked at it. As you know, 431 is an unimproved roadway, old one. And also, we don't have a lot of distance between the current entrance of the Meadows to add another entrance on Old 431. And the Meadows Boulevard is not a standard 30-foot wide street. It's actually 36 feet. We made it wider to accommodate this kind of development off to the side, like I say earlier. This was zoned R-2A, which is multifamily. And based on the acreage there, I guess we could have been looking at around 450 units. Instead, he's deciding to do 100 single-family units.
And the single-family attached or detached?
Uh, it's about a mix of about a half, or maybe a third attached and a two-thirds single-family. I don't know the exact mix.
And then, how soon will the additional lots? We're doing 53 here, but potentially it's up to 101?
Up to 101, depends on sales. I would probably say 12 to 18 months down the road.
Okay, pretty quickly.
You know, and we're also working on future phases of the Meadows. Eventually, the plan will go out and connect over to Berkeley. There'll be another entrance out of the backside of the Meadows. So, you know, the city's regulations, I think, regulates 199 lots on one entrance. Whenever we get over that amount is when we'll have to find another access point.
Has there been any consideration for a traffic light? Has anybody discussed that with?
You know, the developer was responsible for extending, building the section between Old 431 and 431. We did that a couple of years ago. That was set up at the intersection at US 431. That was set up at the intersection at US 431 to eventually have a traffic light, but because that's a state highway, it has to be warranted. I would assume the traffic department would give the same opinion, I don't know if anybody's here, of the Old 431 connection also.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Stonegate Subdivision Phase Three, a resubdivision of part of Lot 1 Village of Stonegate. The committee recommends re-preliminary approval on 46 lots.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes. Thank you, Kelly. That will take us to item three, the zoning committee report. Les, if you will give that to us.
Sure. The zoning committee met on May the 11th, and the following are our recommendations. Item one is Webster rezoning. Public hearing was held this evening.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes.
Item two is Lopez zoning. The public hearing was held this evening.
Is there a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes.
Item three is wind rezoning. The committee recommends that the planning commission set a public hearing for June 28th.
Move to set a public hearing for June 28th.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes.
Item four is a zoning ordinance amendment. P.D. Shopping Center and Highway Business Deletion. Delete zoning ordinance Article 32. Plan Development Shopping Center District Regulations Article 33. Plan Development Highway Commercial District Regulations and amends Article 70. Off-street parking and loading requirements subsection 70.1.3. Minimum parking space requirements to remove language concerning planned shopping centers. The committee recommends that the planning commission set a public hearing for June 28th.
Move to set a public hearing.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes.
Item five, zoning ordinance amendment, undeveloped lot. Amend Article 3, Definitions, Section 3.1. Interpretation to add a new definition for undeveloped lots. The committee recommends that the planning commission set a public hearing for June 28th.
Move to set a public hearing.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes. Thank you, Les. Item four, the invocation and extension of bonds. Ms. Jordan?
Yes, staff recommends the invocation of items one through three.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes. Is there any business to come before the planning commission? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.